Good morning and welcome to the Wednesday, July 14th, 2021 Board of County Commission Meeting. I'm Akeem Ashford, the Director of Communications. We first would like to start off with notifying homeowners of the Federal Housing Administration borrower and program for those who are struggling to make mortgage payments due to COVID-19. Help is still available to assist with keeping your home. The FHA has recently extended the deadline for requesting forbearance to July 31st, so there is still time for eligible residents to take action. For more information, you can visit this website, www.hud.gov/coronavirus/resources/homeowners. This information is available on the county's webpage as well as the Cedric County social media platforms. We'd also at this time like to welcome Dr. Brantley, Director of the Cedric County Extension Center, to the podium to speak with you today about a few programs, upcoming programs they are working on. Dr. Brantley?
Good morning, Doctor. Welcome to the meeting.
Good morning, Commissioners. As you know, Extension is focused on providing unbiased, research-based education for the citizens of Cedric County, essentially, knowledge for life. We do this through four departments, including 4H Youth Development, Agriculture and Horticulture, Community Vitality, and our Family and Consumer Sciences. We appreciate your continued support, and we wanted to highlight one of our programs here today. And especially considering that we had a pandemic year, I would like Teresa Hatfield to talk about her Medicare counseling and aging programs and the impact that it's had on Cedric County.
Okay. Welcome, Teresa, to the meeting. Good morning.
Good morning. Welcome, Commissioners. As Jennifer said, I'm one of the Family and Consumer Science Agents at the Extension Office, and my program focus is adult development and aging. One of the programs that I have the privilege of managing is the Senior Health Insurance Counseling for Kansas Program. And this program provides free, unbiased Medicare counseling to Medicare beneficiaries in Cedric, Harvey, and Butler Counties. My program is, the backbone of my program are my volunteers. I have 84 volunteers that are trained by Medicare and SchIC, and they are the ones that help provide this one-on-one counseling. We can also do some other thing. If people are having problems with their Medicare or have questions about their Medicare bill or need to file an appeal, we're there to help them work through that as well. And then we also have some programs for people with lower incomes who may have troubles paying for their medications or have problems paying for their Medicare coinsurance and copayments. We can help walk them through some of those programs. We do keep track of our impact that we make in Cedric County, and last year during Medicare open enrollment, we calculated that we saved our Medicare beneficiaries about $1.3 million. And so that's money that's going directly back into our economy and helping our seniors live their lives well in our community and helping them to continue to be productive citizens. So we're getting ready to gear up for Medicare open enrollment again. It actually doesn't start until October 15th, but the Extension Office will start taking a list of people for appointments starting August the 1st. So we've got counselors that are meeting with people one-on-one in the office, and we'll probably have a few that are still doing some work at home and doing some counseling that way. So I just wanted to let you know about the SchIC program, let you know what's going on. I also do some other programming around adult development and aging on things like reverse mortgages, advanced directives. I have a strength training class going on right now in Clearwater for older adults as well. And then we also do some things on memory, and we're with caregivers. So I just wanted to let you know about my program, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Very nice. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. So you said that you're doing an enrollment in October. Are you, so if someone turns 65 in November, are they able to enroll earlier? Do they have to wait until?
Yeah, people that are turning 65, they have what's called an initial enrollment period that is separate from the annual open enrollment period. So we're able to help people all year round. So anybody that's turning 65 anytime during the year, they have their special initial enrollment period that's different from that annual enrollment period. So we're able to help them out in a timely manner around their birth month.
Great. Well, thank you. It sounds like you guys are doing some really important work in this community. I appreciate what you do.
Thank you, Commissioner Cruz.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, Dr. Brantley, thanks for being here today. And I was just out at the Cedric County Fair and saw a lot of great things that your folks are doing out there and a lot of displays, so thanks for all of that. And Teresa, as a senior myself, I know that all the seniors receive a tremendous amount of information each year that is very confusing. And one of the neat things is that I get a tremendous number of emails with the seniors thanking me for the things that are happening at the Extension Center to help them work through all of the different options that they've got for Medicare. So thanks for doing that. It's a great asset here in our community, and I know the seniors sincerely appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dennis.
Okay. And Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. Well, I will just reiterate what Commissioner Dennis said. This is a very difficult thing to navigate, so having that help is enormous. So please pass along our gratitude to all the volunteers that I know you said are really what makes that happen, and let them know how much we appreciate them as well.
I will. They are a special group of volunteers.
Okay. Well, again, thank you, Dr. Brantley and Teresa, for all the work you do for the community. So appreciate it. Thanks for coming and presenting your, the update.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, looking at today's agenda, under new business, we've got a presentation of the 2021 Mini MPA Certifications, a resolution modifying Section 16-73 of the Cedric County Code to reflect revisions to the membership of the Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board, a resolution authorizing road improvements therein, Charisse Woods addition Phase Two, a presentation of the County Manager's 2022 Recommended Budget. You will also authorize publication of the maximum property tax levy to fund the 2022 Cedric County budget, establishing public hearings, and a report of the boards and bids and contracts from the July 8th meeting. With that, Chairman, I will turn the meeting over to you, although Commissioner Lopez did sell a little bit of my thunder here, but we wanted to tell you a very happy birthday today, sir.
Thank you, Akeem.
You're welcome, sir.
And good morning, everybody. It's nice to see a crowd. It looks like we're getting back to almost normal. Welcome, and Commissioner Lopez and Cruz, thank you, or welcome back from your endeavor with the National Conference of Counties. So they'll probably mention something about that. And a special welcome, we have a clerk backup today. His name is Josh the Backup right here. So Josh, welcome to the meeting. So with that, I will call the Wednesday, July 14th Board of Cedric County Commission to order. Madam Clerk?
Incursion to be observed by a moment of silence, please remain standing for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez?
Present.
Commissioner Dennis?
Present.
Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Commissioner Cruz?
Present.
Chairman Meitzner?
Present. Next item, please.
Public Agenda.
Commissioners, we received one, I think, one email through the portal on the public agenda. Does anybody have any comments about that? If not, I make a motion to receive and file.
Second.
There's motion to receive and file. The public comment we got received by email, no other comments, so Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. And then, did anybody sign up today? Okay, we didn't have anybody from the public sign up, but I guess I could make an exception since we have the first time in a large crowd. Does anybody in the public want to address us on anything at this time? I don't see any, so we will move on to the next item. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Appointments. Item A, accept the resignation of Lynden Wells from the Cedric County Public Building Commission.
Mr. Papun?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mike Papun, County Counselor. You have before you the resignation of Lyndy Wells from the Chairman's appointment to the Cedric County Public Building Commission. I believe that Lyndy and his wife are moving to Des Moines and are no longer going to be living in this area, and ask that you accept his resignation.
Thank you. Lyndy's not here, but Lyndy, if you're listening, you know that your contribution to our community in a number of areas has been incredibly valuable, so, and we will miss you, but I know that you're going to be back and forth as we've talked before, so we'll still see you around, hopefully. You're always welcome. So with that, I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Lynden Wells.
Second.
Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Next item, please.
New Business. Item B, Presentation of the 2021 Mini MPA Certificates.
Okay, good morning.
Good morning. I'm Melissa Walker. I'm the Director of the Hugo Wall School of Public Affairs. We have an MPA program. There are a number of people who are graduates of that program in the room today, and also the 2021 Mini MPA class. This was an extraordinary group of students who participated for the first time in the Mini MPA virtually. They learned about budgeting. They learned about strategic planning from Mr. Stoles. They learned about human resources and all points in between about managing in the public sector. They're an extraordinary group of individuals. They have bright futures, and because they do, we do too. So I'd like to join, have you join me in congratulating them. We're going to actually hand them their certificates right now. When I call out your name, if you could come up, that would be great. Sean Clovier, an ERP analyst. He had explained to us what that was. But now we know. Oh, you can have them. And I had them in alphabetical order even. Andrew Dilts, who is the Facilities Director.
I don't know.
Amy Murray, Workforce Development Manager. Brian Nicholas, Deputy Director of EMS. Itris Tackett, Operations Manager. And Elizabeth Thornbrough, Budget Analyst. I think a lot of the other people in the audience are the supervisors who nominated these individuals who are here showing support. Congratulations to you all.
Well, thank you, Dr. Walker, and congratulations from the Commission to you all on your accomplishment. Any other comments? Okay. We expect to see those hanging on your wall in your office. There's no recommended action. We received their certificates, so Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item C, Resolution Modifying Section 16-73 of the Cedric County Code to Reflect Revisions to the Membership of the Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board.
Mr. Fessinger, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Fessinger, Assistant County Counselor. Before you is a resolution modifying the composition of the Cedric County Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board. For just a quick bit of history here, the B.O.C.C. created the advisory board by county resolution in 1999, as authorized by state law. The membership composition of the board is defined by county code, but our county code must comport with the constraints placed upon us by state law. Fast forward then to March 5th, 2021, the advisory board unanimously voted that it should henceforth include a member who is a youth between the ages of 16 and 23, with priority given to youth that has been involved in the correctional system. Rational being that someone in that position would provide a unique point of view to that board. You, the B.O.C.C., can effect this change to the composition of the board through an amendment to your code, and that is what the resolution in front of you does. The resolution comports with state law. It's proper as the form, and it's our recommendation that you approve. I'll stand for any questions you have, and also Glenda Martins is here as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. I think we've been briefed as well a little bit on the background of this, so I, any other questions, I think it's a good move for us to approve this resolution. So I'll make a motion to approve the resolution modifying Section 16-73 of the Cedric County Code to reflect the revisions as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Motion carries. Thanks again, Mike, for your work.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Item D, Consider a Resolution Creating a Benefit District in Cedric County, Kansas, and Authorizing Road Improvements Therein, Charisse Woods Addition Phase Two.
Okay. Is Mr. Lynn Packard here? Who's presenting? Mr. Packard, you're up. Lynn, you're up. Ever since you got that award, you're just kind of a rock star in the hallways and stuff?
We had to wait for the photo take out front.
Okay. Good morning, Lynn.
Good morning, Commissioners. Today, we are here to talk to you about a proposed resolution for creating a benefit district and authorizing road improvements, road and drainage improvements within Charisse Woods Phase Two. We were originally up here, I believe it was in 2018, to talk to you about the first phase. This is the second and final phase of improvements for this subdivision, and I'll have Garth come up now and give you the details and the financials and how we're working this out.
Okay. Thank you. Garth, good to see you again. Welcome back.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Garth Herman with Gilmore &amp; Bell, the County's Bond Council. Appreciate the introduction there, Lynn. As you mentioned, this is a resolution related to Charisse Woods Addition, Phase Two Road Improvements. The plan for this is, the request came in from a petition signed by 100% of the property owners of the benefited property of the proposed improvement district. They are requesting the construction of road improvements to serve the seven lots that make up the benefit district in Charisse Woods Addition out in the, excuse me, southwest part of the county down by Schulte. The proposed costs of the improvements are $272,000, and it's anticipated that all of those costs will be assessed against the benefited properties, against those seven properties. So kind of like earlier this year for the Phase One improvements, once the construction of the project is completed and the final costs are known, at that point, we'll come back to go through the special assessment process in order to formally levy those costs against the project. That's down the road. Right now, this is just the initial step in order to authorize the construction of those improvements, as well as a request that the county can also authorize the issuance of bonds to either finance or reimburse the cost of those improvements. And with that being said, if there are any questions, I would be more than happy to answer any that you may have.
Okay. Are there any questions to Garth? If not, Commissioner Lopez? Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the resolution creating the benefit district.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve this benefit district. Any other questions, comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks again, Lynn, for all your work, and Garth, for your work on this. Next item, please.
Item E, Presentation of the County Manager's 2022 Recommended Budget.
Good morning, Commissioners. Chairman Tom Stoles, County Manager, here for our next step. Who's going to bring PowerPoint up? Akeem? Thank you. We're here for the next step of our budgeting process in 2022. This is what we call the 98% Done Budget, and it's for Commission now, between now and August 25th, of Day of Ratification, to make final adjustments and to hear from your constituents in the public. The usual suspects of our budget team, and I just commend this group because during any budget cycle, in addition to their normal jobs, they have to, we meet a lot about budget, and it starts in February and it runs all the way through now. And we will continue to be working in the future as we hear for your final recommendations as we go forward. The goals this year, one is similar and three are a little bit new. We always try for a balanced budget with no tax increase. That's always the starting point. It's always the goal for county budget. What's different this year, and it's quite different than when I stood here last year, is our emphasis in this year's budget was an organizational recovery from pandemic. And there's a lot to that, and we'll talk some about that as we go through some of the adjustments that we'll be moving forward with, hopefully. We know that we have a Delta variant in the community. We know that COVID is still present. I talked with the hospitals yesterday. There's about 40 people in the hospital. I'll get you an email with the exact numbers a little bit later today. So we know it's still out there. We know we have to continue to allocate resources to meet the needs of the community during pandemic regarding testing, vaccination, PPEs, and a continued battle against this virus as it hopefully winds down in our community. And then there's an emphasis in this year's budget on employee compensation, and we'll talk specifically about some numbers shortly. Just to remind the Commission and for the public that are watching, the budget process begins in earnest for 2022 in late 2020, this year. November and December, the staff get together, the division heads and the department heads, and as much staff as we can involve, and we begin to talk about challenges and goals and where we want to head in 2022 and what we'd like to recommend to the Commission. So we hear from staff. It kicks into full gear in February when we have our Board of County Commission retreat, and we begin to listen very carefully to the Commission, who, as you are representatives of the people, what you deem as important, critical, and visionary moving forward. And when we go through that process, for those that don't set in that, it's a lot of note-taking, a lot of listening, a lot of, just listening to the dialogue of the Commission. It's an excellent time of year just to sit and hear the electeds talk. In April then, and after that retreat, we began to shape it up, and we began to create departmental-level budgets. And in April, the budget team will sit down with the department-level people and kind of just go through their budget. It's a dress rehearsal for the Commission meetings that will come later, and we listen and we ask questions, and we get clarity so that we can answer questions of the Commission and the people as we go through the budget process. And then we had budget hearings with you in May of this year, which backed to normal this year. Last year was kind of a scramble, but this year we had a more normal budgeting process. And then we did a number of one-on-ones with you afterwards just to clean it up and bring it to the process that we are presenting today. The state of operations right now in the county, just from a really high level, we are in full pandemic recovery, hopefully, even the way we arrange this room and how we conduct business in this building. The reopening of county facilities more to a back-to-normal type of environment, not only here at the courthouse, but at Reagan and other county facilities scattered around the community. We are getting back to the business after basically 12 to 15 months of not even being able to meet with each other, getting back to our, taking care of our employees as leaders and managers and as staff. And this is past compensation, which we'll spend time today to talk about. Talks about environment, our employee growth, our supervisory training. We went through a whole year where we couldn't do any of that, and the organization, like other organizations around the country, are struggling because of that. We have to catch up, and we have to get back to normal with those types of effort. We always continue to focus on lean government. This is the people's money we're talking about here. It is not ours personally, so we talk about keeping the costs as low as possible, give the best service we can for the costs that we are incurring. And then we're going to make an effort this year to get back to our strategic plan and general government operations, which, as you all know, were basically put on hold all of last year. So I'm going to go through, there's three pages here of recommended adjustments, and I'll just go through very quickly. The first three here deal with employee compensation. One is pay plan. We're committing over $7.5 million to our compensation plan. Our health insurance increases, cost of doing business went up $641,000. We have an oddball year this year. Every 11th year, we have a 27th pay period, and that comes at a total cost of almost $5.5 million to our budget. There was new legislation to talk about truth in taxation. We have to pay for the mailouts to send that out, with the understanding that we will get reimbursement from the state after we do that, but that's a cost of about $150,000. We're adding a grant manager to the finance office to try to parlay that position into all of these federal dollars that are rolling out there right now and all these mixed buckets to do the best we can for Cedric County in the upcoming several years. Mark Clark is getting a couple of positions in the Appraisers' Office. We had an audit in that department. We know we're short of staff, and we're going to try to do that over a series of years to get him up to speed where he needs to be from staffing. So we're adding residential and a commercial appraiser, two positions to that department this year. The MAPD addition represents our city match, so that's just cost of doing business, a little over $28,000. In the election office this year, 2022 will be a gubernatorial election, so we are allocating $100,000 for postage for that. Our usual tax maintenance funding is at $80,000 this year, and we are adding a logistics position in inventory software to emergency management. We've learned a lot of lessons through COVID, and I think that we need to learn from those lessons, and one of those items was logistically, it was very difficult, almost impossible, to manage the onset of the virus with PPE allocations and acquisitions. And it caused us to take a look at our whole logistics and inventory stock. So we made a mistake the last time by not being ready. We'll never make that mistake again. We're going to always have PPEs on hand. We're always going to be ready for whatever comes next and not necessarily rely so much on federal and state government, which is how we had trained through the years. The county will be more ready next time. We're going to add a Chief Pathology Assistant position. I know many of you Commissioners have gotten calls from constituents about lag time in pathology results at the Regional Forensic Science Center. This position is specifically geared to help shore up that timeline, to make our service faster. We're adding a Safety Coordinator, actually to the Manager's Office, and I'll manage that with Lindsay. And there's a couple of safety items in here that I want to talk about. This is actually a person that will, for an organization of almost 3,000, that will help us manage safety throughout not only this building, but all of the county buildings. Cost of doing business with electrical costs are roughly almost $40,000. And then we have a number of requests from the Sheriff's Department, mostly cost of business types of asks for him. For example, medical services for inmates, costs go up, inmate meals, ammunition prices. Who would have thought in a year of pandemic that the ammunition prices would skyrocket like they did, but they have. Additional to that, he's acquiring some portable radios. He's doing a partial firearms replacement program. We have records management system and jail management system fees that we have to pay, and he's doing some security camera replacement in the jail. All of that adding up to the numbers you see on your screen. For the District Attorney, we are adding a Trial Technology Specialist to help him with his backlog, and right below that is Court Pro Tem Hours Edition. These are all backlog strategies to help satisfy the backlog that was created by COVID. And I'll mention in here also that we have these line item budgeted out to come out of GF, but if there's ARPA dollars available for these types of uses, we will deflect some of those costs over to ARPA. That will remain to be seen as Lindsay continues to decipher the rules from the federal government. But these are two items that we could potentially move over to ARPA. The other safety component that I alluded to before was the, I'm trying to move on the right page here, yeah, the Public Works Telematics Effort for Mr. Weber in Public Works. This will help him with efficiency. You can track where his trucks are at. Very similar to what we do in a public safety environment, where we know all of our vehicles are at. Helps for efficiency and accountability. And then if there's accidents, it's basically a black box kind of situation where we can tell what was happening, speeds, and type of driving. So it's clearly a safety addition. When we grow, you have to add, right? So we added to the zoo. We give Dr. Rettling a zookeeper position to help with his growing enterprise of the Cedric County Zoo. And then we have two contingency items here that are contingency because we're not really sure what's going to happen. The first is the public safety contingency. There is a possibility that lieutenants in the Sheriff's Department will go from There is a possibility that lieutenants in the sheriff's department will go from exempt to hourly. And if that's true, there'll be an overtime kick on that. So we're putting contingency aside to take care of that if it happens. And very similarly, in the fire budget, there are captains in the fire that could go from salary to hourly and the same overtime consideration would be given for them. So these dollars are set aside in case that happens. So the recommended budget is no tax increase. We try to limit expenditures. We have no planned service level reduction. It's not planned. We have a staffing issue now, which we have all talked about numerous times, and that's impacting our staffing. But our budget is set up that if we can get healthy and we can retain what we have and recruit a few more, we'll be at normal service levels. But that's gonna require some work in the future. So the budget is prepared for a normal service level, no service level reductions. We're gonna get back to our five-year comprehensive strategy to look at employee compensation. We've talked about this during the retreat. We talked about it during the budget hearings. The compensation situation in Sedgwick County cannot be fixed in one year. It's gonna have to be fixed generationally. We need to get back to that plan. This is year one of it. Here's the bottom dollars. The Sedgwick County budget is north of $462 million. The Fire District budget is a little above $21 million and a total of $483 million and some additional dollars. Those are increases from all the numbers we looked at last year. On the expenditure side, we have a 27th pay period we have to account for. We have CIP one-time costs of radios and TRB expenses and the decision packages that the commission so far has heard and approved to this point. On the revenue side, we did see a valuation increase that was a little bit more than what we expected coming out of pandemic and that has added to these numbers to make them what they are today. If you just want to see where our money's heading very broadly, see, we still spend a good amount in public safety, $188 million. General government, which include row offices and a number of other operations that the county runs, is $140 million. And on down the road, public services, $82 million. Our next steps, where we head from here is this is now officially public. We will have an online public forum that is ongoing between now and August 24th at 5:00. We have a first public hearing for people to come in person on August 5th at 6:00 p.m. I believe that'll be in this building, in this room. And a second public hearing on August 25th, which is also a day of ratification, at 9:00 a.m. here in the courthouse. So I've got Lindsay and the entire budget team here. If there are questions, if not, I recommend you receive and file.
Okay, thank you, Tom. That's a good summary. And Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, Manager Stoltz, Lindsay, Lorian, all your staffs, we sincerely appreciate the work that you've done on this budget, especially as you were working through developing this budget as we were also fighting COVID. I appreciate the fact we're getting back to the strategic plan a little bit better because we worked hard on getting that strategic plan together a few years ago. And it's important that we follow that as we're budgeting. Now, one thing I want us to take a look at in the future. Last year, when we got $99.6 million, we were under the gun to spend that because by the federal government, we had to spend it by the end of the year. So a lot of the things we did were kind of knee-jerk reactions. And we didn't go through this process. Now we've got another $101 million, and I don't want to see us go through that same knee-jerk reaction in the future. You've got a process that works, that we take a look at priorities. We get information in from all of the departments that are affected. We have decision packages. We listen to the public. We do all of those things. And I hope that as we move forward with the next round of ARPA funding, that we do the same thing because it's one-fifth of this budget. So if we're spending this much time and effort on the whole budget, on one-fifth of it, we ought to be spending the same amount of effort. So I don't want to put extra work on you all, but I think it's important that we are very thoughtful as we move forward because we were very thoughtful of how this was prepared. Again, thank you, the staff. I appreciate, I look forward to digging deeper into 788 pages that is before us right now, but it's a great job. Thank you.
Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. I echo the sentiments of Commissioner Dennis and thanks to staff for putting this together. Being the third budget cycle that I've gone through, it doesn't seem to get any easier, especially in the time that we're in right now. One of the biggest concerns I've heard, you know, is our whole employee reclassification and compensation plan. And I know that you guys have put a ton of time into that. And I've, over the last week or so, I've asked for some pretty radical things as far as boosting our employee compensation plan. So I appreciate you, Sheena and Lindsay, looking at you specifically because I know that we have to really figure out how to retain our employees. We have some of the best employees that I have ever worked with, and it's important to pay them what they're worth. And I know that you guys know that. And so please just know that when I bring you crazy ideas, I hope that we can maybe fall in the middle somewhere. That's really my hope. There's a lot, a lot to consider. And I wonder, all of the decision packages that were brought to us, are those published anywhere so that when our constituents are going online to the online feedback, are they able to see kind of what was asked for and what wasn't put in this budget? For example, the appraiser asked for a flight that would fly over our county to see what all new properties could be put on the tax roll. So that, that's kind of an interesting thing that wasn't put on this year's budget, but could be next year's budget. There's a lot of different things that were presented to us over multiple days. And so I wonder if the community was able to see that stuff.
Good morning, Commissioners. Lorian Shawalter, Area Budget Director. We have all that put together from your hearings in May, and I will put that up on the website this afternoon for you.
Thank you. I don't know that, I mean, some people like Lonnie, sitting in the back, might dig through that. But I know for my advisory board, I'd like for them to be given the opportunity to look through that, just to see kind of, you know, what made the cut, what didn't make the cut, and what might be on the table for subsequent years. So again, Mr. Manager and to your staff, thank you for taking the time to do this. This is not an easy task, and I feel like you guys have done the best you can, given the circumstances that we're in. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of comments. I'm, thank you to all of you that were involved in developing the budget to this point. It's a very long process, and I know it's a tremendous amount of work and a lot of good professionals had a lot to do with this. And so I just want to say thank you to all of you that did that, once again. I would reflect on a couple of points here. The state of Kansas just passed a property tax bill that takes effect this year. And I think you referenced it in your comments somewhat. I guess there's money in this budget, $150,000, to send out a notification that, I guess this year we would be reimbursed for that. Is that for two years that would happen and then the third year? I'm getting ahead, saying yes. So for this year and next year, if that card has to go out, then that would be something that the state would pick up the cost of that, but we'd have to send that out this year. Do we know, does that cover all of the taxing jurisdictions that are in Sedgwick County that potentially have that requirement?
Commissioners, Lindsay Purus, so you're CFO. So actually, this $150,000 is for the 2022 budget year. So we actually don't have to do a mailer for this 2022 budget. So it's set aside. But yes, that would cover the cost of any and all taxing jurisdictions that might be a part of that mailer.
And so is that just for next year, '22 only, or is it gonna be for '23 as well? I mean, not in this budget, but I mean, is there commitment from the state to pay for two years?
Yes.
Okay, so it'll be '22 and '23 when that happens?
Yes.
So this year, what's going to happen in terms of notification to taxpayers?
Well, so it's wonderful timing that you bring that up. Your very next agenda item is Lorian talking about your last-upday publication. And that's also where we start to feel the effects of Senate Bill 13 and the intent of notification to have a rate beyond the revenue-neutral rate. So she'll talk about that in this next item and go through the process for that.
Very good. And I'll just make a couple of quick comments and we'll move on here. But you know, the state of Kansas, I think, makes the point in their debate this year in Senate Bill 13 that she just mentioned. The word "tax increase" is a word that people have different ideas of what that means. To the people we serve, a tax increase means more dollars, generally speaking. But to many people in government, including elected officials, many times that word "tax increase" refers back to the mill levy rate. That means that what's a percentage of, how many mills is being collected for each $1,000 of assessed value, for example? I would note that this year, if I understand correctly, the adopted budget last year to the budget that's being proposed this year is about a $26 million increase. And that's being covered primarily, I think, through planned revenue increases from all of our sources, but that includes a revenue increase from property taxes as well. That property tax increase in this budget, as it's in front of me right now, looks like it's about $6.1 million. So there is an increase in tax revenue from property taxes this year, which is gonna, obviously, we're gonna have to notify the people of this truth. I do have one question. I did, I'm looking at the budget book, and I'm seeing now that the '21 adopted versus the '21 revised has about a $41 million increase. And actually, the '22 recommended is actually lower than the '21 revised. I'm just curious if someone can explain that $41 million increase? And I guess, let's talk about, are we, and I guess maybe one final comment after that. Thank you.
Commissioner, do you have your book handy?
I do.
Okay, so we're gonna go to the tab called Budget Summaries on page 63.
Right, it's page I'm on.
And if you go about two-thirds of the way down, you're gonna see stimulus grants on the left. And if you come across to the 2021 revised, you'll see that there's $29.5 million worth of budget there that wasn't there in the adopted, and that reflects the carers' funding that got carried forward into this year.
Okay, so that answers part of the question, but the rest of that, there's a $41 million difference in those two numbers.
So as you go through, Health Department grants is another significant area that increased quite a bit. If you recall, so when we talk about property tax funds, once you all adopt that, we can't change it. But for these grant funds and things, as we had different COVID funding coming into com care and health and aging, those departments were able to come to you and request budget increases. And so what we can do between now and the adopted is get you a list of all of those changes so that we can itemize that for you.
That'd be great. Thank you for that answer. I'll just say this, that, you know, I think if we could pick almost any number on our budget, we would find ways to spend money. There's lots of good ideas out there, things that we would like to address. All of the employees need more money. I would love to see them be paid great. And I would like to solve some of these problems in the community. If we had more money, we could do a lot more great things. Obviously, money is always a challenge. We are limited by revenue and what we can do. And let me add to that what we should do. I think one of the problems I see in county government, like to challenge us as elected officials, to define the guardrails of Sedgwick County government. I use that term because I don't know that we know, we talk about the term "limited government." I'm not sure what the limits are of Sedgwick County government. It seems to me that every problem we can think of that's in Sedgwick County, we perceive there's problems out there, and there's plenty of problems, don't get me wrong. But every problem seems like we want to get involved in it and potentially fund things that really may belong to other jurisdictions or possibly to the people themselves. And so I am concerned about the growth. If you look at the eight years in front of us on these budget presentations today, there's eight years of data there. The numbers actually, actually, it's eight years. We go back a few years and then we project out into the future a few years. And so that's the eight years I'm referring to. But the growth is noteworthy, and we are a much larger government than we were when I first got elected. And so that's a truth, and we're doing some more great things. And to the extent that we serve the people and the people are happy with what we're providing them, that's fine. But we need to be transparent and accountable to the people on what we do. And so what I don't see in county government right now is those guardrails. I don't understand what the limits of Sedgwick County government are. It seems like we are interested and willing to get involved in things that may not be really our paradigm as why we exist as a county government. So with that, I have some concerns, but I do want to say thank you to all you that developed this budget, and thank you, Tom, for bringing it to us this morning. Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. Where specifically on our website can someone go to fill out or look through this budget? I'm looking now and I can't find it, so I just want to make sure that we're clear. You're getting all the hard questions today.
It will be under, we'll have a banner on the front page that you can click to. And when the forum goes live at 3:00, that will also be there. And then it'll be under Finance, under Budget. There'll be a full page.
Okay, so it goes live at 3:00 p.m.?
The forum does, and then the budget will be published at 1:00 this afternoon.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? I don't see anything. I just echo all the appreciation and thanks to Lindsay, Tom, staff, everybody. So with that, I'll make a motion to receive and file as presented for the 2022 budget. Motion and a second. Any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meisner.
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item F, authorize the publication of the maximum property tax levy to fund the 2022 Sedgwick County budget, establish public budget hearings on August 5th, 2021, and August 25th, 2021, and provide notice of the intent to exceed revenue-neutral rate.
Good morning, Lorian.
Good morning, Commissioners. Lorian Shawalter, Area Budget Director. The item before you this morning is requests for authorization to publish the notice of two public budget hearings, which also establishes the maximum budget and the maximum property tax levy for the 2022 budget. State law does require that we publish the time and place of a budget hearing at least 10 days prior to that hearing. The notice must include a summary of the proposed budget that includes the maximum proposed spending for a given year, the maximum property tax levy by fund, and this date is often referred to as the last-upday. After this point, we cannot increase the maximum property tax levy and the budget without holding another public hearing and republishing the notice again. So this year, the notice will also publicize the intent to exceed the revenue-neutral rate in the recommended budget. This does keep the mill levy rate flat with the rate that you all approved as part of 2021 budget adoption. However, this flat rate of 29.359 mills technically exceeds the revenue-neutral rate of 28.349 mills. This will authorize us to notify the county clerk and make publication in the county newspaper and on the county's website of the August 25th hearing on exceeding this rate. The maximum proposed budget is $462,548,518 to be funded with a tax levy of $161,536,297, based on a mill levy rate of 29.359 mills. The publication outlines that the first public hearing, we held here in this room Thursday, August 5th at 6:00 p.m. And the final public hearing, we held right here in this room of the Sedgwick County courthouse on Wednesday, August 25th at 9:00 a.m. Budget adoption is also scheduled for August 25th. So I'd be happy to stand for any questions. If there are none, I recommend you authorize the publication.
Okay. Any questions? Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to get that number again. What was the revenue-neutral mill levy rate that you just mentioned?
28.349 mills.
348?
349.
349. And if you subtract that from 29.359, what's that difference?
It's a reduction of about 1.01 mills.
Well, actually, it's an increase, isn't it? Going to 29.359.
Oh, sorry, yes. What we have in the budget is an increase from the revenue-neutral rate of 1.01 mills.
All right. And it would also be noteworthy, the 29.359, I understand, is actually 1/17 of a mill below the current rate, which is in, for the '21 budget, after the technical adjustments, it ended up being 0.017 mills above the 29.359. So again, we're still targeting that 29.359, which I agree with that policy. That's good policy, and I'm glad we're doing that. But I would like to point out, I guess, this is actually a tax increase from that revenue-neutral rate, which is, I guess, the point we should make sure we understand that today. That's, thank you, thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Don't see any other comments? So I do have a motion related to what you just presented. So the motion will be, I move we authorize a publication of a notice of public hearings and intent to exceed the revenue-neutral rate regarding the Sedgwick County 2022 budget. The publication shall include a total budget of $462,548,518 and an ad valorem property tax levy of $161,536,297, which is approximately equivalent to 29.359 mills, based on mills, based on the estimated assessed valuation and subject to technical adjustments.
Okay.
There's a motion and a second. Any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meisner.
Aye. Okay. Thank you, Lorian. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item G, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on July 8, 2021.
Good morning, Joe.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Pertson, Director. The meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on July 8, we have a couple of items to, we're seeking your approval for. And item one is the Rock Salt for Public Works, and its recommendation is to accept the overall low bid from Hutcheson Salt Company at the rates listed, and we would establish contract pricing for two years with three one-year options to renew. Item number two is computer equipment peripherals and related services for various departments, and this recommendation is to utilize the NASPO Value Point Contract, MNW NC-108, which corresponds with the State of Kansas contracts 40400 and 40400A, B and J, with the vendors listed through July 31, 2022, and they would have options to renew as outlined by the participating lead agency, State of Minnesota. Item three, at this time, we're requesting that this item be deferred for a week until we have a chance to share additional information with all Commissioners. And with that being said, I'll be happy to try to answer any questions, and I recommend approval of items one and two.
Okay. Any questions on items one and two as presented? I don't see any, so I will make a motion to approve the Board of Bids, items one and two as presented.
Okay.
Madam, any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meisner.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioners.
You bet, Joe. Thanks for all the work you do. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Mr. Stolz.
Morning again, Commissioners. Tom Stolz, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items H through M this morning.
Okay, there's consent items H through M, as in Mary. Any comments or questions about any of the items? I don't see any, so I will make a motion to approve consent items H through M.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meisner.
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Legislative Issues.
Chairman, no update for legislative issues this morning.
Okay. When do we recess? We need to do a fire agenda for your, so we can do that now, because I think we have an executive session later. So before we get to committee reports and other, let's recess this and go into the, call the meeting to order for the fire budget or the fire district. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Chairman Meisner.
Present. Okay, next item, please.
Public Agenda.
Anybody from the public who wish to address the Commission on anything with the Fire District? We didn't receive any emails, and I don't see any. So Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New Business. Item eight, authorize the publication of the maximum property tax levy to fund the 2022 Fire District One budget and establish public budget hearings on August 5, 2021, and August 25, 2021.
Good morning again, Commissioners. Lorian Showalter-Ary, Budget Director. This item's identical in purpose to the item you just approved for Sedgwick County. The publication sets the maximum budget for the Fire District at $21,95,559 and establishes a maximum property tax levy of $18,474,511, based on the intent of maintaining a rate of 17.889 mills. Like the county, this item will also publicize the intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate of 17.485 mills in the recommended budget. The publication outlines the first public hearing will be here in this room, August 5, Thursday, at 6:00 PM, and the final hearing will be here at Wednesday, August 25 at 9:00 AM. And budget adoption, again, is scheduled for August 25. Happy to stand for any questions. If there are none, then I recommend you authorize the publication.
Okay. Thank you, Lorian. Did you just, you just switched numbers? You gave the same speech but just plugged in different numbers?
Pretty much, yes.
Okay, very good. Anybody have any questions for Lorian on this? Okay, I don't see any. And being none, again, I'll have a motion that I will read now. So I move that we authorize the publication of a notice of public hearings and intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate regarding Fire District Number One's 2022 budget. The publication shall include a total budget of $21,95,559 and an ad valorem property tax levy of $18,474,511, which is approximately equivalent to 17.889 mills, based on the estimated assessed valuation and subject to technical adjustments.
Second.
Motion and a second. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to take off turn to explain the difference in these numbers as well. This would be a 404 increase over the revenue neutral rate, which... Sorry about that. This would be a 404 mill increase over the revenue neutral rate, if I calculated that correctly. And for the publics, if they're curious what that is in terms of dollars, that'd be $4.64 more in tax on a $100,000 home. That's how that works out. So just people understand, their taxes will go up if you have a $100,000 home, $4.64 this next year in 2022 as a consequence of this vote, if we adopt the budget based on these numbers. And consequently, the previous motion we made earlier, it's about $11.50 for the same $100,000 house for the Sedgwick County side of the budget. So that's all my comments. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. There's a motion and a second. I don't see any other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meisner.
Aye. Any other business related to the Fire District Number One? I don't see any. So at that, we will adjourn the Fire District Number One meeting and return back to the regular meeting of Board of Commissions. Madam Clerk, next item.
Committee Reports.
Committee Reports. Does anybody have anything that they want to share related to committees or boards they serve on? Commissioner Dennis.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, I don't know that it's really a committee report. It could go under other also. But we had a couple neat events last Friday. We went out to WSU Tech, and we were able to see them starting a new pilot training program. And the main part of that is the first year, the airplane is provided free of charge by Textron. We got to see the airplane. It had seven hours on it, sitting there in the hangar, so it was kind of cool. But more importantly, is that a group of organizations, including WAMPO, which were, a number of us are members of, the South Central Transportation Coalition, the city, the county, a number of the other cities, all have been in Topeka advocating for better improvements to some of the roads that we have here in Sedgwick County. And the governor and Secretary Lorenz and Senator McGinn came down from Topeka and briefed us in the afternoon then that we're getting the next phase, Gold Phase 2A, I believe it is, for the North Junction will be funded. And second of all, K-42 down in the southern part of the county is going to have some improvements. It's a very agricultural route. It has a lot of heavy trucks on it. Doesn't have any shoulders right now, so they're going to add some shoulders to that. So those are two major projects happening here in Sedgwick County, and there's four major projects in the region that are being funded as a result of this. So again, because of WAMPO, the South Central Transportation Coalition, and a number of governments in this area, we're getting some very, very important improvements to what's happening in the area. Some of these were also briefed yesterday at the WAMPO meeting, and it's through the efforts of organizations like that that we are able to take a look at the different projects that have a significant impact on each one of our cities, a significant impact on economic development in this area. So I just want to thank everyone that was involved in that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner, for recalling that. It was good stuff last week. Any other committee reports? Okay, being done. Madam Clerk, next item.
Other.
Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. As Chairman mentioned earlier, Commissioner Lopez and I did attend the National Association of Counties National Conference, and I must say that it was so incredibly powerful to meet with Commissioners and other county members from across the nation to learn exactly what they are doing in their communities. The one thing that I noticed was that we all face similar challenges, no matter what geographical area we live in. And I had a couple of takeaways. I won't, I won't, I won't talk about all of the things that I learned, but a few things that I learned were that a lot of communities are doing exactly what we're trying to do here, which is go upstream. So what that means is making a diversion. Some people call it a deflection program, so that we take people and put them in places like substance abuse treatment or mental health treatment before they enter the criminal justice system. So that was incredible. I have some information that I'd like to discuss with folks later about that. The other thing was mental health and substance abuse was the hot topic. But not just the topic, it was what are we going to do to actually solve mental health, substance misuse, and homelessness, because those sort of intersect, as we all know. So one thing I just want to bring your attention to, as Akeem will pull this up, is the Community Solutions Company. This right here is real results, if it will pull up, of how communities, 14 communities in this nation have reached functional zero, which means they have pretty much solved their homeless problem. I received a checklist for ending homelessness with the American Rescue Plan dollars. So I'm excited to discuss this with all of you. If you can scroll down, please, a little bit, and show exactly the real results. We can show the list. We have Arlington County, Virginia, Bakersfield, Kern County, California, Bergen County, New Jersey, Central Virginia and Virginia. All of these places, 14 and across our nation, have eliminated homelessness. Like, we can do that here. So I'm excited to talk about that. It's called Lessons from Built for Zero. So now, if you can go to the second link on here, I have discovered an online community for those suffering from substance abuse. So like Facebook, this Sober Grid is a place where people can go who will have a community of folks who are trying to get sober. As someone who quit drinking almost a year ago, it's so exciting to see that people around the nation will have a place to go on their phone, because we all know how much time we spend on our phones, to communicate with others. Sobriety is a very uniquely touching and personal thing. And for others to share it around the world and share it around the country with each other, it's very powerful and a way to stay sober for those who are trying to do that. And then the third thing that we learned is this Psych Hub. I posted it on my Facebook page. Many of you might have seen it, but it is the world's most comprehensive multi-platform for mental health education. My dad suffers from bipolar disorder, and I don't know a lot about that. But this Psych Hub has a whole library of things where I can teach myself how to handle that, and that's just one example of all of us who are trying to handle our family members, people that we know in the community with real-time information, so that we can better care for those in our community. That was, I got so much I want to talk about, but those two things, the diversion, deflection, all of these things that I've just showed you here. But the third thing was vaccinations. When we talk about coming out of this pandemic, because let's not forget that we are still dealing with a pandemic. For a year of our lives, what did we do? All we did was manage this pandemic. First, it was testing, then it's vaccines. And now it's trying to help people understand and get over all of the misinformation around vaccines. But the number one thing that I heard the most was that you have to take vaccines to people. You can't expect them to come to you. So the mobile clinics that we're doing, the outreach in the community, I think that we're on the right track. We just have to continue doing that. Now, I'll tell you, I learned an incredible amount of information. Commissioner Lopez and I kind of split up our efforts so that we were able, and I'm excited to hear what she has learned, because we really even haven't had a time to really debrief each other. But it was just incredible, the relationships that we were able to make, the connections from other communities, because we're all facing the same things. And quite frankly, around the country, people are solving things that we can solve here. We don't have to recreate the wheel, right? We can just learn from others. And I'm excited to meet with staff. We actually have a homeless conversation at 1:00 today. It's vitally important that, over the last, Commissioner Dennis mentioned earlier, about the $99 million that we received and the $100 million that we're going to receive, our city partners across the street are going to receive $70 million. How can we, as two big, huge governments, work together with this ARPA money to really create some change in our community? I drive down Topeka every single day. I see people sleeping on the ground, the same people. There's one gentleman who hasn't changed his green shirt in probably two weeks. These are real problems that we can really change. And so with the $170 million that the two governments are going to get, I hope that we can really come together with this checklist and all the smart minds that we have in our community to do something that will move the needle so much that we can be the 15th community in this nation to end homelessness. So I look forward to having these conversations with you. Thank you for giving me this time to download you briefly on some of the things that I learned at the NACO conference. It was an incredible way to bring information from around the country to Sedgwick County. So thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you for that report. And we'll just follow up with allowing Commissioner Lopez to comment.
Sure. Well, I would just reiterate everything that you said. I mean, it really was an incredible experience to not only be able to meet so many people around the country and just realize that we're all in a similar boat. I mean, we're all seeing the same issues and really being able to adapt and take what they've done and model it in our size community and what would work best. And so the Psych Hub site that Commissioner Cruz mentioned is incredible, and I had not heard of it until the conference. I was really impressed by everything public health that they did there. I mean, just the way they broke things down. They made mental health such a large part of those conversations, and I think we're finally getting to the point that we're realizing that mental health plays such an important role in our health overall. And so it is, it's being noticed on a national level as well. And so I'm really happy that we were able to have so many of those conversations. I went to different meetings about the ARPA funds, and I would just say that, you know, we are doing an incredible job here. I mean, some of the things that they said were good ideas to try to implement, we've already started the process of talking about it. I mean, that we're doing a community survey is huge. And so many Commissioners that I had met, they were not doing that. And so I think that just shows how great you guys have really done to make sure that we're meeting the needs of the community and prioritizing what they think is the most important in how we get there. So I think I learned so much. I'm so happy I was able to go. And just going forward to be able to make those connections and to continue having these conversations past this meeting is huge. I also went and met with Senator Moran yesterday before I left, and, I mean, it was a great conversation. I'm really glad, I was, you know, leaving yesterday, and he was getting back in town, so it worked out really well that we had a couple hours, you know, time that we could get together and meet. But we really talked about the infrastructure bill at the federal level. One thing we heard a lot at some of these meetings, we went to, like Nancy Pelosi spoke, and she really talked a lot about this infrastructure bill. And they're trying to figure out the best way forward. And so I would love to see, and I'm sure my fellow Commissioners would agree, that a lot of these decisions with funding need to try and stay as local as possible and not have everything go through the state. And so really, just advocated that, you know, that we, as we are closest to the people, we understand the needs the best, and so we should really try and keep some of those or as many of those decisions local as we possibly as, as we possibly can. We discussed mental health and the need that we're, you know, just the problems that we're seeing here and how we could really use any kind of federal help that we could get. We talked about groundwater issues. I know that's probably really exciting for everybody, but that's something that, at least in District 2, we really struggle with. And the infrastructure bill talks about surface water and storm water, but they don't mention groundwater, which is a completely separate thing. And so asked if it would be possible to have anything written in there about that. And so he actually had a meeting yesterday evening about the infrastructure bill. So hopefully some of the things that we talked about will get brought up. And then broadband is also another one that, you know, was started when the bill was drafted, or there was $100 billion for broadband that got cut down to 65. And so really just advocating to keep that 65 because that's such an essential and important service. So I am really happy that we were able to go. I'm glad that we did kind of split up because we were able to get the most out of it. And, you know, I just, I really appreciate that. And hopefully we'll continue to grow those relationships and see what else we can bring to Sedgwick County going forward. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Howell?
Did you have your line?
I did. I thought Commissioner Dennis was next.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. First of all, I appreciate the feedback from what happened at NACO. Just a few years ago, we weren't members of NACO, and then we've rejoined. And it's very much valued to be able to go and communicate with other counties that are experiencing similar issues and seeing what they're doing. So thanks for going and thanks for bringing back the information. We appreciate it. As far as the discussion that Commissioner Cruz had about the ARPA funding, I think it's critical. I know I mentioned in our en banc, we do need to have an en banc in the near future, but maybe we need to take a look also, besides just Wichita and Sedgwick County, on what we can do. Because as a matter of fact, there's $274 million coming to Sedgwick County. Sedgwick County is getting 101 of that. The cities are getting 86 million. And the school districts are getting 88 million. So we need to make sure that we take a look at all of the different funding that's coming into Sedgwick County, because we all share the same problems. The school districts are facing the same issues that we are. So we need to make sure that we're tapping into some of their resources in order to be able to solve some of these problems in the future. So that's my comments. I appreciate what you had learned, and we look forward to a little bit more. One other thing that I do want to mention, I got an email from our dear friend, Mike Hill, Sheriff Mike Hill. And he let me know that a previous county commissioner, Dave Bayou, has passed away. And so I want to send my condolences to his family. As we all know, we stand on the shoulders of those who went before us, and the things that we do are going to impact the commissioners in the future. So I want to make sure that we recognize Dave Bayou as a previous Sedgwick County commissioner, and thank him very much for his service, and our deepest condolence to his family. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Dennis. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to, first of all, just talk about, last Monday, I had a, a new meeting that I'm starting to host. I call it Bullet Points. It's at Range 54 on East Kellogg. And my very first meeting that I had, I had, I think, 19 people that attended that meeting. It just, it's come and go, come and go. I provide refreshments, and we had some great conversations. So I plan on doing that on the second, second Monday of each month in the afternoon. If anybody wants to attend that meeting, also make sure that people are aware of that. Secondly, I, I feel like I need to respond publicly to some of the things that are in the news, and I want to do that now. And so, Mr. Chairman, I've prepared a, a statement. It's going to take about five minutes for me to read through this, but I would ask for your grace to do that. "This week's numerous news reports that expose the ever-worsening emergency medical services crisis is alarming. One thing I have learned since taking this seat in 2015 is that, as elected officials, our first and highest priority should always be to ensure we are providing quality public safety services for the people we serve. Let me start by clarifying that I'm extremely proud of all the Sedgwick County public safety professionals that skillfully work together to compassionately help our residents in that worst moment of their life. It is true, there are attrition issues in many of the other Sedgwick County-related facets, but today, my focus is on EMS and the dangerous crisis that now exists. This predicament is not something that happened overnight, but something that has been developing for, for almost three years. Since October 2018, and especially since August of 2019, the EMS system has battled morale issues that has resulted in high levels of attrition and an overwhelming loss of institutional skill and experience. Before September 2018, the Sedgwick County EMS had proudly developed a national reputation, and was revered as one of the very best EMS organizations in the nation, if not the very best. I have been told that Sedgwick County EMS is even referenced in a paramedic curriculum as one of the best EMS systems in the nation. How did we get from that high reputation to today? Well, there's a lot I can say about that, but for now, I will just focus on a few points and the solution I believe that's needed. I think the Wichita Eagles' comprehensive reports should compel responsive leaders to act. Some people may discount those reports by saying that they are inaccurate or slanted. But from my personal knowledge, on this situation, going back to the days before the former EMS director left Sedgwick County EMS, I believe the reports to be credible and factual. Note, from those reports, the Eagle reporters sifted through nearly half a million ambulance response times from Sedgwick County 911 and Sedgwick County EMS to determine how patients receive care between 2017 and 2021. They compared detailed employee rosters. They analyzed more than 2,700 records pulled from county's marvelous software, which tells us where the ambulances are at any given moment, to calculate the ambulance shortage data. They reviewed hundreds of emails, and they reviewed more than 10 hours of audio recordings between county officials and EMS employees in 2019, 2021, 911 audio. And they interviewed more than 50 people for their reporting. The investigative reporters that worked to develop those reports spent hundreds of hours over three months to investigate and organize the massive, complicated information into a news story, a series of news stories that effectively disclosed the reality of this crisis to the public we serve. We say we believe in transparency. On my organizational chart, it shows the citizens of Sedgwick County are collectively my boss. With that in mind, the people have an absolute right to know what is happening and why. I do not think the inevitable, necessary changes should be put off any longer. We have a plethora of data, and making some decisions to bring health back to the organization is already overdue, in my opinion. It's time to move forward. Although I appreciate the investigation being, being performed by Height and Fanning and Honeyman, they started this about six weeks ago. Those results, whenever they are presented to the commissioners, will be attorney-client privileged information and therefore, therefore not available to the public. Unfortunately, they did not interview the nearly 100 employees that have left Sedgwick County EMS since the previous permanent director hired, retired in 2018. It seems to me that that, that process should have included those folks. So what evidence do I have? Well, I have the EMS petition that was presented to the commissioners in Ju-, in June of 2019 that predicted where we would be today. I have the Board of EMS investigative report that I received in March of 2021. I have personally met and spoken with the majority of the staff across the EMS organization over the last two years. I listened intently to the roughly four hours of testimony when 39 EMS professionals, both former and current employees of Sedgwick County, bravely spoke up despite fears of retribution and retaliation. They testified in front of the county manager, Tom Stolson, Assistant County Manager Rusty Leeds. Most recently, we have numerous credible, comprehensive investigative reports from the Wichita Eagle that has exposed the situation to the public. And finally, we have seen a public support for change from the online petition that began about two days ago, and already has about 3,000 signatures. I am disappointed that Sedgwick County leadership has not, I'm sorry, has allowed this issue to fester to the point that extensive organizational damage has brought the entire public safety system to the crisis, in my opinion. Let's be clear, the B O C C does not have the direct authority to make changes to organizational structure or leadership. If we had that authority, I would be glad to make those motions today. The one and only person that can make those changes and those decisions is the county manager. For example, on August the 20th, 2019, after a staff meeting, sorry, during, after a staff meeting with, discussion with B O C C, it appeared most of the commissioners were supportive of merging the EMS OMD organizations. So after that meeting, the county manager did merge the EMS OMD organizations and selected someone to lead the new organization. In my opinion, those decisions made that day are the main reasons we have an EMS crisis today. Since the B O C C cannot directly make the organizational changes or leadership decisions that fall under the authority of the county manager, then all I can do is share my opinion on what I think needs to happen. If changes, if changes to happen, it can only happen when the manager makes that decision. That can be today, or next week, or possibly never. So today, I'm formally asking the county manager to make the necessary changes immediately. I firmly believe that we are, that we need to revert back to separate EMS OMD organizations, because we know that worked well for decades, whereas this new model has not delivered any of the objectives stated for initiating this experiment. Secondly, we need to seek and place the best people to lead these separate organizations. I believe this is the action needed, and will immediately stop the hemorrhaging and begin to restore the EMS system back to health. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Any other comments? Being none, we will close the other. And now we will, Commissioner Cruz, please, on the executive session.
I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 30 minutes until 10:55. For the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel relating to the performance evaluation of a management-level county employee, and that the Board of County Commissioners returns to this room from executive session at 10:55.
I'll second that. Motion is second. Any other comments? Being none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman, my turn.
Aye. We'll, we'll vacate to the boardroom. Okay.
Okay. Thank you. We have returned from executive session. No action taken and no formal action taken. So was there any other business that comes in front of the commission? I don't see any, so we stand adjourned.